And we're doing the best we can. But I don't think you can say this anymore. And are we even on your list of priorities? My dad always says, "You are what you do, not what you say." Well, what you do makes me cry at night. You grown-ups say you love us, but I challenge you. Please, make your actions reflect your words.
You're starting to see that there are so many different ways to make a moral argument in a letter, in a story, in a poem. The first argument that you heard about the Newts was an argument based on virtue. Remember what he said? He said, "What kind of creatures would we be if we didn't preserve the existence of these slimy, little peeing creatures? What kind of thugs would we be?" Asking, you know, "Who are we?" It's almost an Aristotelian question. "What is a good human being and what's worthy of me as a moral being?" And then that lovely little letter from Severn Suzuki is an argument that appeals to the well-being of children. If climate disruption and environmental degradation harm children, and if it's wrong to harm children, then we ought to act to prevent that harm. You see the science? What harms children? That's a scientific question. We have a moral obligation not to harm children. That is a moral affirmation. From those two together, but from neither alone, we can reach the conclusion that we ought to act to protect the children. So this third argument is the one in the essay that I wrote, and it is an obligation. It's arguing that we have an obligation based on love. To love something is to accept the obligation to protect it. So if you say you love this beautiful world, then by that fact, you are imposing an obligation on yourself to keep it well. The essay is called "The Angelus: The Call to Forgiveness at the End of the Day." And what you need to know about it is that the date line is May 25, 2025. So I'm imagining myself in 15 years, quite an old woman. And here I am in this essay, looking back on those 15 years that intervened between when I presumably wrote this and the present day. What happens from now on until through the next 15 years? May 25, 2025. All those years, the Swainsons' thrushes were the first to call in their morning. Their songs spiraled like mist from the swale to the pink sky. That's when I would take a cup of tea and walk into the meadow. Swallows sat on the highest perches whispering as they waited for light to stream onto the pond. Chipping sparrows buzzed like sewing machines as soon as the sun hit the Douglas firs. If I kissed the knuckle of my thumb, they came closer and trailed again. For years, there were flocks of goldfinches. After my husband and I poisoned the bull thistles on the far side of the pond, the goldfinches perched in the willows. When they landed there, dew shook from the branches onto the pond. The garbage truck backed down the lane, beeping its backup call, making the frogs sing even in the day. Oh, there was music in the mornings all those years. In the overture to the day, each bird added its call, until the morning was an ecstasy of music that faded only when the diesel pumps kicked on to pull water from the stream to the neighbor's bing cherry trees. The evenings were glorious, too. Just as the sun set, little brown bats began to fly. If a bat swooped close, I heard its tiny sonar chirps just at the highest reach of my hearing. Each downward flitter of its wings squeezed its lungs and pumped out another chirp, the way a pump organ exhales Bach. Frogs sang and sang, but not like bats or birds, like violins. Violin strings just touched by the bow, the bow touching and withdrawing. They sang all evening, thousands of violins, and into the night. They sang while crows flew into the oaks and settled their wings, while garter snakes, their stomachs extended with frogs, crawled finally under the fallen oak and stretched their lengths against cold ground. I don't know how many frogs there were in the pond then. Thousands, tens of thousands. Neighborhood children poked them with sticks to watch their jelly shake. When the eggs hatched, there were tadpoles. I have seen the edge of the pond black with wiggling tadpoles. There were that many, believe me, each with a song growing inside it. In the years when the frog choruses began to fade, scientists said it was a fungus. Or maybe bullfrogs were eating the tadpoles. No one knew what to do about the fungus, but people tried to stop the bullfrogs. Standing on the dike, my neighbor shot frogs with a pellet gun, impeding silver BBs in their heads a dozen holes, until she said, "How many holes can I make in a frog's face before it dies? Give me something more powerful." So she took a shotgun and filled the bullfrogs with buckshot, until legs snapped, faces caved in, they slowly sank away. Ravens bellowed from the top of the oak. When the bats stopped coming, they said that was a fungus, too. When the goldfinches came in pairs, not flocks, we told each other the flocks must be feeding in a neighbor's field. No one could guess where the thrushes had gone. Two springs later, there were drifts of tiny white skin scattered in the shallows like dust rags in the dust. I spoop one up with a stick. It was a frog skin, a perfect empty sack, white, intact, but with no frog inside, cleaned, I suppose, by snails or winter. And not just one. Empty frogs scattered on the muddy bottom of the pond. They were as empty as the perfect emptiness of a bell, the perfectly shaped absence ringing the angelus, the evening song, the call for forgiveness at the end of the day. As it happened, that was the spring when our granddaughter was born. I brought her to the pond so she could feel the comfort I had known there for so many years. Killed eels waddled in the mud by the shore, but even then, not so many as before. By then, the pond had sunk into its warm, weedy places, leaving an expanse of cracked earth. Ahead of the coming heat, butterflies fed in the mud between the cracks, unrolling their tongues to touch salty soil. I held my granddaughter in my arms and sang to her then, an old lullaby that made her soften like wax in a flame molding her little body to my bones. Birds and the butterflies fly through the land. Go to sleep, you little baby. I held her close, weighing the chances of the birds and the butterflies. She fell asleep in my arms, unafraid. I will tell you, I was so afraid. Poets warned us, writing of the heartbreaking beauty that will remain when there is no heart to break for it. But what if it's worse than that? What if it's the heartbroken children who remain in a world without beauty? How will they find solace in a world without wild music? How will they thrive without green hills edged with oaks? How will they forgive us for letting frog songs slip away? When my granddaughter looks back at me, I will be on my knees, begging her to say, "I did all I could. I didn't do all I could have done." It isn't enough to love a child and wish her well. It isn't enough to open my heart to a bird-graced morning. Can I claim to love a morning if I don't protect what creates its beauty? Can I claim to love a child if I don't use all the power of my beating heart to preserve a world that nourishes children's joy? To love is not a kind of la di da. Loving is a sacred trust. To love is to affirm the absolute worth of what you love and to protect and to pledge your life to its thriving, to protect it fiercely and faithfully for all time. Ring the angelus for the finches and the swallows. Ring the bells for frogs floating in bent reeds. Ring the bells for all of us who did not save the songs. Holy Mary, Mother of God. Ring the bells for every sacred emptiness. Let them echo in the silence at the end of the day. Forgiveness is too much to ask. I would pray for only this, that our granddaughter would hear again the little lick of music, that grace note toward the end of a meadowlark song. Meadowlarks. There were meadowlarks. They sang like angels in the morning.[531.16][531.16][applause]
Thank you, everyone, for those wonderful essays. So the task now, we're going to come back to a couple essays and a poem to finish things off in a moment, but we're going to ask you two questions. And this is going to be the first question. Remember the argument, the two-premise, one-conclusion argument. We're not going to ask you about the first premise. We're not going to ask you to do the science. The science seems to be done. We're going to ask you to think about the moral premise. So we've seen some affirmations in readings that affirm this moral obligation. You know, yes for the children, yes for our own integrity. And so that's going to be the first question. It's a two-part question. Do we have a moral obligation to the future, to leave a world as rich in life and possibilities as the world that was left us? Do we have that? Yes or no? It's a pretty straightforward question. You can answer no. But whether you answer yes or no, you have to justify it. Why do we have that obligation? And what we're going to do, once we, I'm going to give you a little bit of time to talk to your neighbor, preferably the one you don't know. So if nothing else, you'll walk away with a new friend.[621.29][621.29][laughter] Or enemy, depends on how well you do, I suppose, yeah. And that's really the first question. And then what I want to do when we come back from that question is we want to report back. So focus your conversations. I'm only going to give you a few minutes. Do we have this obligation to the future and why? And your answer should be kind of brief. I mean, they should be just sort of, you know, five words or 10 words. So the goal of your conversation is to come up with, I guess it would be kind of a dull bumper sticker, but a bumper-sticker-ish kind of slogan. So go ahead and have a short conversation with the person next to you. All right, are we ready? Wrap up your conversations? Either you know it or you don't. So remember, the reporting out, these should be pithy. I mean, think about Kathy's essay. I mean, it's a long essay, but the take-home message is, yes for the sake of the children. And we're going to try to go, we're going to go without, we don't have, we're going to go without a microphone, so you have to project your voice. So who came up with a brilliant answer?
No, that's no weak start.
Oh, mediocre answer?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.[838.32][838.32][laughter]
Well, I think they'll like this one. I just said, "Yes for all of the above." I don't think they're mutually.[844.54][844.54][laughter]
We can't go beyond all of the above. Good, any other ones?
I just want to say that lawyers call that parallel pleading, and they're really teaching us a lot. Because if you're defending a person whose life is at stake, you're not going to try one line of argument. You're going to try appeal to pity, you're going to try to, you know, appeal to facts, you're going to try appeal to everything. And it seems to me that we don't need to choose which is the very best reason to act. We need a thousand reasons to act. So when you say all of the above, you're saying something quite significant because you're leaving behind, sorry, I'm breaking up the rhythm of this, but I can't help myself.
Philosopher of law, here we go.
You're leaving behind this notion that we have to agree on one set of reasons. And you're pointing out that many of us have many different values, but each of those values points in the same direction. Sorry.
And I think it's a good description of the book, where we want, I mean, it's a shotgun approach to these different arguments. They aren't going to persuade everybody. For the sake of God's creation, you have to believe in God first, for instance, in that appeal. What other arguments or other reasons do people come up with? Don't be shy. Yeah, back there.
[inaudible]
So, yes for the sake of our own continuation? Great, great, yeah. So for the sake of the continuation of morality? Right, so morality is an extension of, I mean, it's a human creation, but it doesn't have to be focused only on human beings. Right? So it could be focused on human beings. We've seen these arguments. But we've also seen arguments, we could imagine arguments that suggest that we have more obligations outside of the human realm. So it can be as broad as our imaginations. Yeah, back in the corner.
Yeah, that was one of my issues was, I was saying a lot of self-defense arguments in the middle for, that's why I'm very selfish and supportive of humanity. When it comes, I feel more like you take the sacrifice because in silence, in violence, considering that in silence, violence is in the past, we, we might as well just never believe her, so that we have obligation to things that we've oppressed, you know.
So an obligation to right past wrongs, even though they apply outside of the human realm, would be a way to think of that. Good, good, yeah.
Well, I mean, we're making the assumption that humanity is not natural. It's something other than nature. I don't know. To ensure that, I'm not necessarily, when I say the need for propagation of species, I'm not necessarily saying humanity is good, well, nature is good, part of, I don't know.
So yes for the propagation of other species, whether they be human or non-human. Good. Others. This side of the room, you're getting your butts kicked. By this side of the room, I don't want to, I'm just saying.
I don't know if I got the captions correctly, but our conversation tended towards no. And our thinking was that, but pulling out the idea of a moral obligation, we makes it separate from who we are, and that that is actually something that is in ache to being alive and to being living, so.
So no. My summary's, I'm lacking a summary.[1071.16][1071.16][laughter]
I asked Michael to stand up there and summarize because I thought he was good at it.[1075.82][1075.82][laughter]
Right up until then.
Go ahead.
Okay.[1079.82][1079.82][laughter] Other offerings, yes or no? I'm glad somebody said no, actually. Yeah?
I was saying yes because I
Would you stand up so people can hear you?
Yeah, I was saying yes because I think there's this, I really like this South African concept of the wind to you that says, "We are people because of all the other people who are..." You know, I mean, I'm me right now because of what I've heard you say, which you probably got from this other guy, it kind of travels around the world. But that, I think, what we're talking about, human and non-human, that applies to any living organism. I mean, the two squirrels that I saw in my tree this morning. So I just become less human, the less connections that I have with other things, with other living beings. So in that sense, I feel like morality is almost a measure of connection.
So it could be yes for the sake of our extended notion of humanity, for persons that are not human beings, for instance. There's an important distinction there. Good, good. Any others? There's no such thing as off the wall, by the way. In case you're, well, yeah. If you're going to break out and interpret a dance, then maybe, but, I don't know. Any others?
Yeah, Clark.
Clark?
Well, we actually had two. I mean, one was a version of the "for the sake of the children" argument, but the other had to do with beauty. You know, what kind of people would we be if we gratuitously, needlessly destroyed something so beautiful?
So it's almost its own argument. Beauty is worth preserving as the moral premise. We're destroying that beauty, therefore, stop it, kind of argument. Yeah, for the sake of beauty, for instance. Others? Yeah.
I had a good thought, for the sake of my parents' moral obligations to me, and then my grandparents' moral obligations to my parents, so I've just trickled down.
Yeah, for the sake of logical consistency, perhaps.
No, it's a matter of reciprocity, isn't it? It's a matter of passing the gift along, of recognizing what's been given to you and honoring the gift by assuming the obligation to keep it going.
That was one of the most, I think, surprising parts of the book, was this notion of gift and reciprocating a gift appropriately. Yeah. Others? Way back.
If the world is a beautiful place to be, and we believe it to be, what would it be if part of it is gone? Wouldn't it be us?
Yeah, so for continuation of a beautiful place. Good, good.
The earth is valuable in and of itself.
In and of itself.
Yeah. And so we have an obligation to honor that value, apart from its usefulness to us.
For the sake of compassion? I mean, if we love and care for, you know, the human race, why can't we care for what we live, what we live on, what supports us, what sustains us?
For the sake of compassion, great.
You know, we expected the Dalai Lama would make an argument based on compassion.
He let us down.
He let us down. He said, his argument was, "Oh my God, we're all going to die."[1284.73][1284.73][laughter] Somebody, I saw a hand back, yeah.
I think, we talked about respect, how you leave a place, how you found it when you're a kid, when you go visit, and I was thinking that lack of respect often leads to violence. Violence leads to suffering. And we have a human duty to prevent suffering.
Nice.
That's our, we believe that our job is to prevent suffering, which is going to cause significant suffering, not just, you know, others.
Good, good, good. So what I'm, I'm going to tell you something about the second question, because I want you to think about it a little bit. So we've heard this kind of smattering of arguments. And what I'm going to ask you to do in the second question is I'm going to ask you to take those values, and we want to think about enacting them in some way. I'll give you more instructions in a moment. But we'll go, we'll break back to a couple of readings now.
Did we get all the answers?
Yeah, we want to shortchange it. Not all the possible answers, but in the room. Okay. Where's there? I didn't know we sat.
I'm going to read an essay called "The Danger of Human Exceptionalism" by Daniel Quinn. I'm up here, I'm actually Betty Wells, that's my real identity, but I'm going to be, from this point on, Daniel Quinn. I'm here because Clark Wolf, I team-teach a course with him, and we talk about some of these issues, like we're talking about tonight. But kind of interesting, in the same class several years ago, we voted a book named Ishmael. The students voted nominated books that we didn't cover as one that we should have covered, and Ishmael won the contest as the one book the 26 students thought we should have assigned. So that was very important in their development. So when I saw the choice of reading Daniel Quinn, I jumped on it for that reason, and also because it was the shortest reading, so. In addition to writing Ishmael, Daniel Quinn has written some other things which I'm actually not familiar with, but with some great titles, such as Work, Work, Work. I'm not sure how much fun that one sounds. And the other one, a more recent one, If They Give You Line Paper, Write Sideways. That I like a lot, so. Okay. "The Danger of Human Exceptionalism" by Daniel Quinn. "One day, some 10 years ago, I was riding in a taxi to a vacant site under the Brooklyn Bridge. The driver asked what was taking me to such an unusual spot. I explained that I was making an appearance on a show for Granada Television devoted to threats to the human future. He was obviously puzzled, perhaps even a bit incredulous. What in the world was I talking about? Although he seemed intelligent and otherwise normally informed, he had never heard the first word about any such threat. That, as I say, was about 10 years ago. A great deal has changed since then. It would, I think, be hard to find anyone in the United States who was completely unaware of the threats we face, even if he or she were unworried about them." Okay, a few pages later. "How, when we cut down or burn down a forest to turn the land into cropland or pastureland, the biomass that formerly belonged to the tens of thousands of birds and bugs, foxes and squirrels, lizards and all other wildlife is destroyed, as thoroughly as they can be destroyed. When we grow our crops or pasture our cattle on that land, we make sure that none of that biomass goes back to the creatures that formerly lived there. We protect it carefully because we want it for ourselves. It is our understanding that we need the biomass for ourselves, that we have a right to take it, for ourselves, in ever-increasing amounts. And what is the effect of this? I certainly don't mean that clearing a thousand acres of forest destroys whole species, although it's not impossible that it may do so. What I mean is that clearing a thousand acres of forest diminishes tens of thousands of species. And when we clear the adjacent thousand acres, we further diminish those species. And this is, is in fact what we do, to thousands of acres every day. And the result is that inevitably, species do become extinct, as many as 150 of them per day." Okay, in the third and last excerpt, "We are like people living in the penthouse of a hundred-story building. Every day we go downstairs and at random knock out 150 bricks to take upstairs to increase the size of our penthouse. Since the building below consists of millions of bricks," this seems harmless enough for a single day, "but for 30,000 days, eventually, inevitably, the streams of vacancy we have created in the fabric of the walls below will come together to produce a complete structural collapse. When this happens, if it is allowed to happen, we will join the general collapse, and our lofty position at the top of the structure will not save us."[1634.54][1634.54][applause]
So Quinn's essay was from a section of the book. You can kind of imagine it's, the answer is yes for the survival of humankind. I'm going to read from my essay, which comes from a section of the book, and the title of that section of the book is "Yes, Because Our Moral Integrity Requires Us to Do What Is Right." I wrote this essay before, a couple of weeks ago, but a couple of weeks ago, I was driving on M-32 in Michigan. So Michigan has a security issue evidently, so they call some of their county highways, put M, just so you know you're in Michigan. And M-32 runs between a town called Gregory, Michigan, and a town that's called Hell, Michigan. So there's a town called Hell, Michigan. It's only about six miles. And I was listening to NPR in those six miles. Six miles, it's not very far. And in that course of that six miles, I heard three NPR stories. They were all terrible stories about terrible places in the world where terrible things are happening. But they all ended exactly the same way, as if somebody had written a formula for the story. So it was about this sort of terrible things happening, and then the news anchor would say, "Well, is there hope?" And the person would light up and say, "Well, of course, there's hope." And so the best thing about this story is that there are three stories in six miles from the road from Gregory to Hell, which meant that literally, the road to hell was paved with stories of hope. And that's actually, that's, and that annoyed me, and that notion annoyed me when I originally wrote this essay. So this, the essay, my essay in the book is called "To a Future Without Hope." "We are bombarded with a contradiction. Our environmental leaders have convinced us that we will suffer the various effects of massive global climate change. Hundreds or thousands of species will be wiped from the face of this good, green earth, and there will be tremendous and disproportionate human suffering along the path to this dimmer future. Our leaders convince us that the future is not only in jeopardy, but it is essentially hopeless. Then they do something amazing, even audacious. They turn around and assert there is hope. I realize this may sound terrible, but this gesture toward hope has begun to make me angry. I think I understand what's going on here. We search for a motivation to act, and sometimes people act in desperation, sometimes they do amazing, creative and wondrous things. But sometimes, many times, they do not. I see it in my students nearly every day, the desire to do good and just and beautiful things in the world so easily quashed by some other student or professor." things in the world so easily quashed by some other student or professor, who flippantly points out that their individual decisions and actions do not make any real difference in the world. The student is gutted, mouth agape, no response in sight, so they give up before they start, and I blame that on hope. I'm not saying that I dislike all uses or forms of hope, sometimes I admit there seems to be so little at stake. Someone says or writes that we need to maintain hope in the face of great harms, great sorrows, and the rest of us nod and resolve to do just that, and it's not clear that any of us, the speaker, the writer, the listener, really even knows what it is that we're hoping for, or what work hope is supposed to be doing here. What worries me, terrifies me really, is the use of hope as a motivator for healing our wounded and warped relationship with the natural world. I worry that hope is not only a throwaway term, a vacuous sentiment we dole out at the end of a paragraph, or a book, or a film, or an interview, but that it is dangerous and counterproductive. If you Google the words "philosophy" and "hope" together, it's true, one of the first hits is a cosmetics company oddly called Philosophy, that peddles a skin moisturizer product even more oddly called Hope in a Jar. The downside of the internet. Jarred Hope is pricey, 28 bucks for a single ounce. The company tagline reads, "Where there is hope, there can be faith; where there is faith, miracles can occur." I have to fight my gag reflex here for the same reason that I fight it when I hear hope used as a motivator for action aimed at averting environmental harms. You know, there's another story of jarred hope, a story equally, though differently, sickening. In ancient Greek mythology, Pandora was given a dowry and ordered by Zeus to keep it sealed, but curious Pandora could not resist. She opened the dowry and unleashed the scourges of humanity, greed, vanity, slander, envy, pining, and other diseases. The last scourge, the last evil let loose, was hope. How is it that we set this trap for ourselves? The nub of the problem is found in our fixation on consequences, on judging right and wrong actions, picking professions, and even justifying or evaluating the value of a lived life on what those actions, professions, and that life produce. We've built a society fixated on the future, perpetually risking all the attendant problems of justifying means by their ends, and forever flirting with endorsing the hedonistic instincts of the masses. We've therefore built a society that can readily be disempowered. Psychopathic serial killers tell us that the way they control their victims is to give them little tastes, little slivers of hope. But when their victims lose hope, they can no longer be controlled. So, here's what I want, what I think we need so desperately. I want us to replace "I hope" with "I resolve to do the work," or "I will be this kind of person, I will live this kind of life," or any sort of utterance that focuses on obligation rather than on consequence. What we need, what we need more than anything, need to save ourselves from our own destructive fixation on the future, is no less than an individual and collective moral revolution, a revolution that includes abandoning hope, caring without hope, and a commitment where we quietly, almost submissively, prop ourselves against those forces in the world working to bring ruin. This, I think, is the new ethic in the face of a future without hope, the only moral anchor imaginable in the sea change rolling our way. We often hear that people only change in the face of crisis, but we forget that a crisis can be a moral crisis as well, a sense of revulsion for a life that we are living, a commitment to live differently and to be a different kind of person. We need the great yuck. Yuck, what we are doing is repulsive. Yuck, this is not the way a responsible person lives. The great yuck can then give way to the great yes. Yes, I will live a life of respect, of humility, empathy, care, and attentiveness. Yes, I will choose to live with dignity and grace, no matter what. But none of this, the yucks and yeses, is held hostage by the attainment of some future state. We, each of us, right now, at this exact moment in time, have the power to choose to live the moral life, to live a life that is indeed worth living.
One of the questions that we get, do I turn it off? One of the questions that we get, as much as any question at all, is, okay, so I get it, I'm with you on the dangers of climate change, I understand that this is a moral choice, how I live is a moral choice, but so what am I supposed to do? What am I supposed to do? And you know, the answers to that question, we think, are extraordinarily discouraging, because everyone always says, "Well, you know, go online, because there's always these lists of 50 ways to save the planet, and number one is always switch out your light bulbs." So, I call these things the light bulb lists, and you know what's on there, you know, eat local food, don't eat beef, sorry, it is a big methane machine, you know, drive a Prius, all these kind of things that we should do, and we absolutely should do everything we can along those lines, but there's two kinds of ethics. There's the ethic of regulation, and there's the ethic of affirmation. And one thing says, what shall I, what should I do and not do? What are the rules I should follow? What are the practices and the rules? And then there's the other that says, what kind of a person do I wanna be? Who am I? How can I find the fullest expression of who I am in the most joyous way? It's really important for us to follow all the things on the light bulb list, because if you do, it empowers you to refuse to be an instrument of somebody else's destruction. Most of the things on the light bulb lists have to do with consumption, and with the effort of advertisers and corporations to make us not into moral beings, but into consumers, who make their decisions not on the basis of what we believe in, but on the basis of what we're told that we need. So, the light bulb lists are really important, because you can say, "I just won't buy into your making me a tool of destructive practices for the earth." And that's really important. That isn't very empowering, and we also would encourage people to think about the ethic of affirmation. I always tell my students to think about what the philosopher Friedrich Bächner said. They say, "What is my calling? What should I do? How should I live my life?" And his answer is this, he says, "Your calling is at the intersection of your great joy and the world's deepest need." Your calling is at the intersection of your greatest joy and the world's deepest need. We're used to thinking about the world's deepest need, and we forget to think about our great joy. What do you value most? What do you really, truly treasure in your life? What do you really value? How can you make that, then, into an expression of who you are that meets the world's needs? So, for example, if what you care about more than anything else is surfing, I'm in the wrong place, aren't I?
Then you should move.
Then you should move, no. Then you should put yourself in charge of water purity at that beach. I mean, you should apprentice yourself to the person who's doing the water quality tests, and you should make yourself responsible for this basis, this thing that you value the most. If you are a God-fearing person, and you believe that your biggest responsibility is to God, to protect creation, then you should be working along those lines to make the church a true sanctuary for living creatures. No more long, green lawns, all the land that the church has around it ought to be bird refuge, it ought to be native plants and bird refuge, and you should transform churches into real sanctuaries for the animals. If you love to sing, get together with your other friends and go out there where the bulldozers are ripping into the land, and sing the songs of sorrow that would acknowledge that loss. You see what I mean? What do you love? What do you really care about? What do you value? If it's your grandchildren, then my goodness, you are empowered to help your grandchildren to have a world that they can thrive in. So, what we're going to ask you to do next is to really think about this in two ways. One is, what do you most deeply value? What is really centrally important to you in defining of who you are? And then we'd like to ask you to think of one way that you might make your life into a form of art that expresses that value. In other words, what might you do, not in terms of chasing light bulbs around, but in unplugging your computers, although you must, but in terms of something very creative and fun and joyous, so that you can take your deepest values and bring it to the service of the needy, needy desperate world. So, will you turn to someone behind you or in front of you? In other words, we're trying to shift direction of your interaction, to help you find someone new? And will you take just a minute to talk about what you most deeply value? And then help each other brainstorm just one sort of creative thing you might do that would express that value in action. I'll give you a little longer than Michael did, because I'm nicer than Michael. I'm overhearing wonderful ideas, let's get them up in the air for everybody to hear.
Should we start with the mediocre ones again?
Let's have a great celebration of ideas. Let's just stand up and throw some ideas in the air, until we fill the room with things we might do. One thing. Yes, please. Consume a hell of a lot less. There you go. Kind of sums it up. Yes.
I think there's a lot of people who are still kind of ignorant about, you know, the issues and how serious this is. I mean, sustainability is something you really need to pursue, and I think if more people are aware of what's going on, they may take more incentive than what they should be doing.
And what's a good way to do that?
Journalism. I wanna be an environmental journalist, and so my duty is to just inform people, get more into the media, because I look in the media, I don't see much about the environment, and it really concerns me. I think there should definitely, there should be more publicity about that.
Good, so become an environmental journalist. All right.
Beck.
I'm gonna start soliciting, I'm sorry. I'm a TA for the Intro to Speech class here, and if anybody would like to do a speech on the environment, we would, you must be, we'd welcome you. Just as an example for our students, that way you get about, you lock about 600 students in a lecture room, they would all be hundreds of students.
That's a great idea.
And if they wanna do that, what should they do?
You can contact me, or you can contact Amy Slagel, we have a speaking website, so.
And what's your name?
Abby DeBoer.
Blue shirt.
I value wilderness. I think wilderness is a very valuable experience, and I think we need to help others experience wilderness, and wilderness meaning where there's not other human intervention and that sort of thing, just go out and experience what nature is, and have that opportunity. And I think through whatever arts I may have in myself, or as I spoke with other here, we have different connections to arts, I think those experiences could be extended into that wildness or wilderness, if you will, and help others have a better value, the same, perhaps similar value.
Good, good.
Share it.
My compassion, or my passion is to, as animals, to go to reproductive parks, and I feel that my call, life, is to help control the pet population as well, it helps to future the generation of our endangered species. I value food, growing food, and a connection that you have with the earth through that, and I value nature and the natural systems that, like, the way that things relate with the nature, and I want that to translate into having a farm that works with all of this.
Good.
Couple dozen more.
And then we're halfway there.
Well, I was talking, I've thought about this quite a bit, actually, because I don't know, that's what I do for fun. And I think that what really makes me come alive is being in caring relationships with specific people. And, so what I've been able to do is, in my volunteering with an organization at Des Moines, I sort of am able to bootstrap off of that, and sort of try to create spaces where people can come together and try to experience that, and so that's a way I can take something that really makes me come alive and sort of amplify it into something that's made better.
Going into your backyard with your kids?
And with people, yeah.
Remember, Rachel Carson would take her little nephew in the dark, and they would crawl around in their backyard looking for the source of the cricket noises.
Well, this actually fits right in line with that. When I was young, we would always go canoeing in Canada, and I have never felt so free and so much awe of the world as I felt in that circumstance, and providing that for my kids and for other people was something I really, I really wanted.
I think the movement of front, probably, is just a point about the larger, or large part of the population being ignorant of what is actually happening, and how it affects them, and how it affects everything. And I think it brings me to the question of accessibility, and we talk about, you know, caring about green spaces, and going out into nature, and let's go out and explore this, and feel this, and sense this, and understand its value and purpose in the world. I think it's important for us to understand that there are a lot of people who don't have access. There are a lot of people for whom these issues are so far off the radar, because it's about the area. So, I think it's about bringing these issues to places without that kind of accessibility, of bringing awareness and education, and even bringing these spaces into spaces that are not known to them, and helping people to understand their connection with the world.
Remember Rachel Carson would take her little nephew in the dark, and they would crawl around in the backyard looking for the source of the cricket noises.
Well, this is, this actually fits right in line with that. When I was, when I was young, we would always go canoeing in Canada, and I have never felt so free and so, so much awe at the world as I felt in that circumstance. And providing that for my kids and for other people was something I really, I really wanted.
We take classical.
I think the movement of the French, it's interesting, points about, the larger, well, large part of the population being ignorant of what is actually happening, and how it affects them, and how it affects everything. And I think it brings me to the question of accessibility. And we talk about, you know, caring about green spaces, and going out into nature, and let's go out and explore this, and feel this, and sense this, and understand its value, and look at this in the world. I think it's important for us to understand that there are a lot of people who don't have access. There are a lot of people who are, who these issues are so far off the radar, because it's about the areas. So I think it's about bringing these issues into places without that kind of accessibility, of bringing awareness and education, and even bringing green spaces into spaces that are not now available, and helping people to understand their connection with the world.
Great.
My passion is science, but also I have a passion for just, you know, how nature is really beautiful and everything. And I think as people, we need to be accountable for the mess we make of it. So something I like to do, just whenever I like have a plastic bag with me, I like to pick up litter, because litter is really disgusting, and it makes, I don't know, just nature look bad. And I think it's just something that's very simple that we can do, but improve things.
Seventeen more.
Yeah, I'm in healthcare, and our country spends twice as much per person on healthcare, and we're not getting as good a results as many other countries of our size. In fact, the variation in quality and results in our country is really very dramatic. There are some regions of the country that are spending two or three times as much per person as other areas of this country. And if any of you have read the book "Overtreated" by Shannon Brownlee, you'll know that many Americans think that more healthcare is better healthcare, and that's actually not true. People need to understand that when you get extra tests, extra treatment, it's not necessarily in your best interest. So there's a lot of waste and inefficiency in healthcare, and when you're spending over one out of six dollars on healthcare, you don't really need to spend that much. And there's a lot of waste and inefficiency in healthcare. So one of my passions is trying to change the system to get more awareness of that waste and inefficiency.
Kevin.
I actually like to craft, I like to sell, more specifically, my mother owned it, she works at a furniture store, and she has old fabric containers that have absolutely no commercial value at all. And I still am trying to make it into something that has value. I like to excel in all. And so that is something I would like to make into a business or a nonprofit, you know, just to get something that really doesn't have much value, and you give it value, and keep it out of landfill, or out of incinerators, and...
The point is that...
Did you do it again?
The point is, the point is.
There's a point.
That none of these things might, that, that, that none of these will probably save the world. I mean, if what we, if we can't act unless we're sure that our activity has consequences that, that helps save the world, then we are disempowered and paralyzed. What they will do is allow us to live lives that we believe in, that allow us to show integrity in our lives, which is wholeness, which is a matching between what we most deeply value and how we actually live. And this is a beautiful, beautiful thing. Michael, do you want to come up with this whole list of reasons?
Just magic it. This is actually, I'm echoing the 14 different sections of, of the book. So when we asked these people to affirm this obligation, like I mentioned, they spoke with one voice, but they offered many different reasons. So do we have an obligation to leave a world at least as rich in possibilities as the world that was left to us? And people said, "Yes, for lasting prosperity. Yes, because the gifts of the earth are freely given, and we are called to gratitude and reciprocity. Yes, for the honor and rights of future generations of all species. Yes, because compassion requires us to reduce or prevent suffering. Yes, for the sake of the children. Yes, because justice demands it. Yes, for the survival of humankind. Yes, because all flourishing is mutual. Yes, for the stewardship of God's creation. Yes, because the world is beautiful and mysterious. Yes, for the full expression of human virtue. Yes, for the sake of the sparrows and seagrass, for newborn whales and tons of krill, for fish like confetti on coral reefs, for lingonberries and the paw prints of bears, for each of these and all of the others. Yes, because we love the world." So it's nice, somebody pointed out in a recent review of the book, that when you string all the sections together like that, it, it's like a prayer, which, that was a really good review, when, when it ends that way.
And what we'd like to do, and what we'd like to do is turn that prayer into a promise. I want to thank you all for coming. There are books for sale here, and we would be happy to sign books. We also would encourage you, you know, as you, as you leave, to not leave so quickly. There are refreshments in the back, and perhaps maybe it would be a wonderful thing if, if each of you would approach a person who did express their dreams and their values, and encourage them to go forward with a life that embodies them, that is the biggest thing we can do. That's what's worthy of us as moral beings. So let me just close with a poem that's from the book. It's from Gary Snyder. It's called "For the Children." "The rising hills, the slopes of statistics lie before us. The steep climb of everything going up, up, as we all go down. In the next century, or the one beyond that, they say, our valleys, pastures, we can meet there in peace if we make it. To climb these coming crests, one word to you, to you and your children: Stay together. Learn the flowers. Go light."